Good morning. I would like to say thank you to the county commissioners meeting. It is number forty-three, is that correct? My child voted. All right. Thursday, November seventh, two thousand twenty-four, approximately ten oh five A M. And with that being said, do we have any public comments? Eric? I want to welcome everyone here to the county commissioners' meeting. It is number forty-three, is that correct? My child voted. All right. Thursday, November seventh, two thousand twenty-four, approximately ten oh five A M. And with that being said, do we have any public comments? Eric?
I'm Terrence Sorkel, one-two-seventy East Grant Street, Louisville, Ohio. I really enjoyed listening to Kamala Harris. Uh, except, uh, not accepting speech, but, um, concession. She said to all of us in the United States, it will be a smooth, peaceful transition, not violence. How I voted this year, it was all blue. If you said the election was denied, was stolen in two thousand twenty from Donald Trump, you're nothing but a fascist.
Okay. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Anyone else? Well, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate our newly-elected county commissioner, Mr. Gino DiFavio. And Gino, if you would care to come up, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but we wanted to congratulate you.
Morning. I'm Gino DiFavio, I live in nine seventy, do I have to do that, the address? Nine seventy East Philadelphia Avenue, Youngstown, Ohio.
Right.
I want to, I want to thank people of Mahoney County. I want to thank Dave for coming over this morning and having nice words, and Carol, we're going to work well together. I really do want to move this county forward. I want to, uh, I want to do what I set out to do. I want full transparency on this board. I want to treat our employees and, and everyone who works here respectfully at all times. I want to bring more economic development to the area, I think there's places we're lacking. And that's why I ran, I mean, when you picked, when you decided to run for office, you have to have your family's approval, I mean, because they got to be by you, be by you. And we saw a lot of stuff that was said during his campaign, and it was just terrible. And that, that's why good people don't want to run. You have to have a tough skin, because that's coming, you know that's coming, they're going to do that. But I have a tough skin, I was committed to running this race. I wanted to serve the people of Mahoney County, and I'm blessed to be able to say that I'm going to do that. January third, and with that, thank you guys, and we'll see you later.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'd like to recognize Mr. Rob Santos, Austin Township trustee, nice to have you on the meeting. Congratulations, Mr. Santos, thank, thank you very much. Thank you, I appreciate it. I also want to congratulate our treasurer, Mr. Dan Yama. Dan, would you like to say a few words?
No, I'll, I'll just say thank you, and likewise, likewise. And, uh, continue, continue onward.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on the screen? Okay, uh, Carol?
Motion for the approval of the previous minute for board meeting number forty-two, Thursday, October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and approval of bill for Fender.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Oregatti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicani?
Yes. Journal entry?
Motion for the approval of journal entries number one.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Oregatti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicani?
Yes. Over agreements, letters A through I, we begin with the convention of visitors bureau, and we go to make that. Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, item A is an agreement of Palom Media Inc., uh, DBA sports events for an advertising placement in their December, December annual planners guide in the amount of three thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars, non general.
Thank you very much. Engineers?
More than anyone. B is an agreement with commercial truck and trailer for repairs to our vehicle number eighty, in the estimated amount of one thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars and six cents. C is an agreement with commercial truck and trailer for repair to our vehicle number fifty-seven, that's in the estimated amount of two thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents of both.
Thank you. So, Al? Morning, commissioners.
D is an agreement with SOS Security Systems for an alarm monitoring system at the Hazmat EMA building in the amount of two thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety cents, general funds.
Thank you. JJC?
Yeah, I can do it for you. This is an agreement, I can have a second.
That was your old dog.
Yeah, hands alone, um, steel coating, very much to be resealing and filling the cracks and restryfting the parking lot, the amount of ten thousand, general fund.
Thank you. And jobs and family services, Audrey Morales.
Yes, good morning commissioners, good morning Audrey, good morning Holly, and good morning Jim. A letter F, job and family service agreement with the Beatitude House for permanent housing services in the amount of a hundred, one hundred twenty thousand dollars, non general. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey, and finish up. Phil Purrier, last.
Good morning commissioners. Uh, G is an agreement with Foundations for the Future LLC for chip home repair work at thirteen eighteen South Mahoney Avenue, in the amount of three thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars, non general. H is an agreement with Prime Carpentry LLC for lead house control and healthy homes work at two thirty-five South Shenley, in the amount of sixteen thousand oh fifty-five, non general. And I is a, an agreement with JDM Real Estate for lead house control, healthy homes work at four sixty-nine Meadowbrook, in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-five, also non general.
Thank you, Phil. Motion?
Motion approved number two, agreements A through I.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Oregatti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicani?
Yes, change orders, A through F, we begin with engineers, Rick?
Yes, uh, A is change order number one and final with the Stelli Company for the two thousand twenty-three OPWC Bridge safety upgrade program and the two thousand twenty-four sales tax resurfacing project that was in the amount of six hundred twenty-four thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars fifteen cents, non general.
Len, Phil Purrier?
B is an agreement, or A, uh, change order, uh, number one with American Pinnacle Construction for lead hazard control and healthy homes work at two twenty-eight South Portland, in the amount of nine thousand three hundred dollars. C, uh, is a change order with American Pinnacle for lead hazard control, uh, and in healthy homes work at eight fifteen Dean Street in the decreased amount of six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, D is a change order number one with American Pinnacle Construction for chip home repair work at thirteen-ten South Mahoney Avenue in the amount of one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, E is a change order with the Howland Company for chip rehab work, uh, at one fifteen Forest Park in the decreased amount of two thousand three hundred and five dollars. And F is a change order number one with Howland Company for lead hazard control and healthy homes work at nine twenty Sherwood in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-three dollars, all non general.
Thank you, Phil. Motion?
Motion approved number three, change orders A through F.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Oregatti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicani?
Yes, resolutions?
Motion approved resolutions number one, addition.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Oregatti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicani?
Yes, nominations, letters A through D, a law library, we have our, we're in here, good morning.
Good morning, engineers, good morning, Audrey, good morning, Holly, good morning, Jim, I forgot earlier. This is a resolution approving a law library resources board to amend to the agreement with license access for access to selected ebooks for three years and get an estimated amount of eight thousand dollars for the first year.
Thank you. And sanitary. Joe?
Good morning. Uh, B is a resolution to amend, uh, previous resolution for twenty-four-five-sixty-two to replace Lisa Yorco with Philip Tate as an alternate to serve at the Ohio Public Works Commission, District Six, Integrating Committee. And C is a resolution approving the two thousand twenty-five bond form for excavators, contractors, developers, and interested parties to perform work connecting lateral sewers to the Mahoney County sanitary sewer systems.
Okay, thank you. And last but not least, Trion?
Okay, and good morning again to everyone. Uh, you, you may recall back in two thousand twenty-one, I had a key member of the staff who, who, uh, suddenly and unexpectedly announced his retirement. Uh, this was during the height of the COVID. And the individual carried out some very important functions in my office, retired with no notice. So we hired Clark Schaefer Hackett, CPA firm, to help me in, and basically pick up some of the work that he was doing. Our Schaefer is a very respectable firm, they do work for the Counter-Treasury, it's a litigation. Uh, they were recommended by other firms that we have dealt with. It did not work out, I was dissatisfied with what they did for us. So we have paid them to date, uh, total contract, the total agreement with them was for about seventy-five thousand. We have paid them to date twenty-one thousand, and they are billing us for the rest. I have refused to pay it because of their nonperformance, what I perceive as nonperformance. Uh, our attorneys got together with their attorneys, and they have worked out the settlement, that's what you see in front of you. So we're going to pay them about, the total of about fifty-seven thousand on the seventy-five thousand dollar contract. We're going to save the county, uh, you know, the difference, about eighteen thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation.
Kind of long, but I thought you, you don't, you do really well, thank you.
Motion approved number two, resolutions A through D.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Oregatti?
Yes.
Commissioner Tropicani?
Yes. And with the order, speaking of elected officials or department heads care to comment. You want on the screen? Al? Okay.
And I just want to say one thing, uh, for those, and, um, everyone will soon, you'll soon find this, uh, that everything that we vote on in these meetings are all looked at prior to this meeting, and we call it the hits. It was, uh, it's a, uh, payment of everything that's going to be on our agenda. If we look at, you know, if there's a question on it, or if we have issues that need to be further looked at, we vote with this, and I say that, I say that about this after every election, no matter who changes or who doesn't change, so that everybody knows that these meetings are not a blanket. There are things on, on this that we pull off the agenda until we get further information on it. And those of you that have the most convenience to know that, and our department heads, of course, are part of that. So I just needed everyone to know that, so it doesn't have the appearance that we just go to work to vote on next day, and we don't have any comment, which is not true. We do. But those are held in our meeting, in the board meeting, prior to this, and all that. And that's, congratulations to everybody that won, and, uh, Dave, I'm starting to see somebody as good as, have you been as partner for so many years, you've done so many good things, and I'm hoping that in the future that that tended to happen, that we have great staff, we have great people in Mahoney County. Uh, we treat them very well, and we're, we're good with everyone, and we talk. And I say everything's perfect, because in a, in a, in a world, there's nothing perfect. And there are things that need to be addressed, maybe there are not, maybe they need to be looked at further, I don't know. But I just want to thank you. Wish you the best. And I'll still call a bitch. Anyway, don't print that.
The moment's on film.
I better not say anything else then.
Yeah, right.
Just thank you. Thank you, that's what I have to say, I want to thank everybody, I want to thank you, Megan. I'm very excited about going to the retirement courthouse. Uh, we have been in receipt of, um, of our, um, they call it a moving flag. And what it is, it's made from, uh, travel screws, drywall screws, thank you. Because I, when, when Megan and I were there at the fair, I, I'm looking at this, well, Megan, how many of you is this? And we went up, and of course, my good friend, Professor Vaughn, who is the district director of Washington, veterans, the straightaway, he's brought a beer, and it will be housed with the whole. So proud of them. You'll see that all upstairs if you come off the level. It's a female. Finally, we get some female veterans that we should honor, other than our male veterans, they're probably in the room, I know Jimmy's one, and we got a few in here, so I'm glad, I heard from that, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you.
Really? Be better later. Um, first of all, Anthony, congratulations.
Good morning.
A lot to say, twenty years, it's, you know?
Long time.
That's a blessing, uh, and, and a lot of people talk about, um, the retention and the length of a, of a candidate. But this is something I hope our children inspire to do, to be public servants. And to look at this as careers, and things that you can do, and meet the needs of people. It says a lot to put your life out there for people, and all the things that you have to deal with, you know, and constantly be on the call. So I do appreciate that you all have been public servants, and you have taken it with pride and dignity, and done the things that you need to do for the citizens of Mahoney County. I think your record stands very proudly of all the things that are out there, and it has been accomplished. And so I am proud to have been a part of that part of it. I look forward to where we go from now, I look forward to all of the new elected officials, and what they're going to do, and what they bring to the table, because everybody can bring something to the table. Um, my door is open, uh, always. If any information you need in interim, that you need information, please let me know, I'll get it to you. I have no problem with that. Um, Jen is our own lead director the same way. If you need any information, she will get it to you too. We, I have, um, you guys are my bosses, you will be my boss, and I always treat everybody with respect. And that's the way I live, that's the way I work, and I don't think anybody up here thinks that I do something different than that. I would appreciate, uh, so Dave, it's going to be hard. Nothing on you, but it's going to be hard, because you came in right after I came in, and so we've done a lot, and accomplished a lot, and I think that you should be very proud. Every resident of Mahoney County should be very proud of what you've done, really. I mean, the justice tax, all those things, you guys worked together to do those things, there was this stability. When I came here, this was a four million dollar hole in, in the just, in the general fund. It was a four million dollar hole. I looked at that and said, what in the world is this? And piece by piece, and we had setbacks with the MCO revenue being cut, we had other setbacks where other things were cut. But we still climbed out, climbed out, climbed out of that hole until we put reserves in place, put things there. So now, if something would happen to the justice fund, or there was a thing, at least they have a transition period to adjust to it and figure out what to do. So those things are in place, you brought this level of stability to this county that was not there. And so I appreciate you working with me, I appreciate you listening to the advice, and working together, sometimes clashing, but still coming out as a unified front, and I think in government, we don't see that a lot. Doesn't mean that you guys have not had clashes, but you come out as a unified front, and I think that has been beneficial to the, to some of Mahoney County. And I'm going to shut up because I'm running, so. You need me, call me.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Sorry.
David?
You know, it's, uh, it's, it's kind of mixed emotions, you know, like, I feel bad for my family, just getting involved with us, I, you know, because we give heart to everything, and, uh, so, nobody, nobody, the, every elected seat belongs to the people, you know, and, and, you know, we don't control it, we don't own it, we shouldn't. They did it belongs to us, you know, and I've had privilege, now I'm sitting back, you know, we fight it, you know? A lot of people say that, I've worked this part, I've been there twenty years, in Austin, down nineteen, actually, in Austin Town. You know, though I was a sales director at Time Steel, you know, and, and basically two full-time jobs, of, of that's, and it made me think, when I was working at the township park, uh, you know, on election day, I looked over at the stone there that said, you know, had my name, Jimmy Johnson's name, co-chairs of the last decade. And I look back, you know, after all the results came, and I thought to myself, wow, you know what? Thirty years, you know, I've been in a Fourth of July parade or in charge of the fireworks. I haven't had a Fourth of July of my family, you know, ever, ever, that I could, because, you know, from the time we were elected in Austin Town till now, you know, and I, I look back, and I think, you know, St. Patrick's Day parades, Fourth of July parades, every, every event, you know, the things that consume your life, uh, when you're elected, to become part of everything is ever-present, especially in county, you know, and, and, uh, you know, so it's, it's something that I, I actually, you know, look forward to, you know, not having that sense of twenty-four-seven, you know, and, uh, you know, I, I, I've always, um, had the approach in government, you know, and I give, Megan being Carol Matt, when we get into arguments, I, I always give this, you know, my spot side, you know, the good of the many outweigh the good of the few.
He hasn't done it in our.
The good of the many outweigh the good of the few, that's always been my approach. And I would do absolutely nothing different in any decision we've made, in anything that's happened that I did. Because I've always said, from day one when I walked into the county, someone said to me, you can't change this, or you can't change that, because there's too many people that work for the county, they'll work against you, and you'll lose. And, you know, we blocked, and it was like five, seven, four million dollar hole, and I don't make top decisions. You got to know where to look, you got to know where to save, you got to know what to do. And if you're not doing it for the two hundred and forty thousand residents, you know, you work for everyone, you work for the employees, and you work for the residents, but you've always got to do the right thing. And I said, you know, back then, twelve years ago, if I don't get reelected for doing the right thing, then it's time for me to go. And that's how I look at it, because in every situation, in every instance, my decisions were based on the good of the county, the residents, and, and I, and I have a good feeling about that. So I, I mean, I walk out of here with no regrets, um, you know, obviously, you know, I'm disappointed. Um, but, you know, fifty-some thousand people voted for me and embraced the job we do. You know, so, and, and I, I can live with that, you know? And, you know, the, the sad thing is, is that if you look at, you look at the valley, it's just a red wave from national politics pushed down. I mean, the, you, you just look at the people, went in and voted straight D, straight R, and, you know, it's sad, because county government, in township government for twenty years, we accomplished a lot, because nobody said you're Democrat Republican. You know, when you're working for the people of your own community, there's no Ds and Rs, there's no red and blue. You work on behalf, you know, people in Austin Town came to me and said, fix my flooding, we got three thousand homes that structure flooding. You know, and we did, they didn't say you're Democrat Republican. You know, there's too much emphasis being made on partisan politics, because this board, you know, we never voted on immigration, we never voted on abortion, we never voted on gay rights. I mean, none of those things impact the people, none of those decisions are made by us. And the decisions that are made by us impact the residents of Mahoney County. And the county's never been in better shape, never. The things that really just appeal to people, that the red wave just ran over, and, you know, you look at somebody like Dan Sensen, to me, my heart breaks, you know, that guy is such an honorable individual, that's worked so hard for the county, and the year he's been in the clerk of courts. Norlin Palermo, she's considered absolutely the best recorder in the state of Ohio, you know, I mean, it's, it's like, you know, how does, how does that happen? It happens because, you know, it's just driven from the top down, and believe me, when you get to our level, none of that's important. You know, none, none of the things that happen nationally impact us like the job that we do on a day-to-day basis. So, you know, I, I, I want to thank all the people that worked for the county, you know, Roger Carroll, Anthony, and, you know, probably, I mean, Hannah, everybody, all the people in here, you know, that work for the county, and work so hard, like elected officials like Dan, you know, uh, Dan, you just, you know what, my, my mother's smiling, because you know my mother loves you. And she always loved you. But, uh, you know, it's, it's just all about, you know, the people you serve, and, you know, I, I mean, I, I, I've been around thirty years, you know, and, and I got pushed into it because nobody fixed my flooding in Austin Town. And that's the only reason I, the impetus to run, and I ran, and, uh, I, I've served proudly, uh, respectfully to all the people, I hope, uh, that I, that along the way, you don't make everybody happy, you know, but today's a different world, you know, different world. It's, it's, uh, it's not, it's usually not about the communities anymore, it's about getting somebody else, you know, out of office, not getting somebody in the office that's going to do better, do the right thing. So, anyway, it, uh, it is what it is, and, you know what, I was out last night in my garage fixing my track back to pick up my leaves. Um, you know, we're talking about the drywall, uh, uh, flag picture, I mean, I, I pounded most every nail in my house when I built it, and I remember twelve-foot sheets of five-eighths drywall, but I've got, still got two burnout drywall guns that I did, hung every sheet of drywall in my house, and while I was thinking I needed five-eighths instead of half-inch, I'll never know, because it almost killed me, you know, but, you know, it's, uh, I, you, you guys all know me, I love to pound nails, I like to make stuff, build stuff, and I went out fixing my lawnmower, got it ready, pick up my leaves, because I had three acres of leaves, and, you know, so, I, I look forward to, you know, just, um, you know, doing something, working on my car, I'll lose, um, but I'll be watching all of you guys. You're not going to be, you're going to be proud, you're going to be proud. Are you going to call me up at two in the night and, and ring my doorbell? You know, I, I, you know, I remember all of us during COVID, working so hard, delivering masks to people at all hours, you know, and taking things out, and, you know, Bob Hendrickson, dinosaur plastic, pretty, opening his factory up, making shields, and all the things we've done. You know, I, I have no regrets on anything, no regrets on anything, and I'm proud to serve, and I'm proud to work for all those people that I've worked with over the years, every one of them, because I think that in every instance, I've come in, and when I came into the boards, they've, there's been conflict. And I think that, that I always served, I, in my eyes, as a uniter, to try to bring happy media to the board. When I got caught here twelve years ago, Anthony, every person and their brother, including your family, said, who are you with, Anthony or Carol? And I said, what do you mean? And Anthony or Carol, Carol's family, who are you with, Anthony or Carol? I said, I don't know, tell me the issue, I'll give you my opinion, you ask them, get their opinions, and then you'll know whether we're united or divided. You know, all I can tell you is, I make my own decisions for my own reasons, for my own thought process, and I try to do as much background work and, and, uh, to find out what the right thing is in every instance. And the three of us, you know, I treated everybody equally, you know, and I, I hope I did, and, and we never, or I won't say we never, we always did agree. But, you know, you have to disagree respectfully, you have to disagree, uh, and you either convince somebody of your opinion, or they convince you of their opinion, or you come up with another idea, because if you're not all three communicating together, then you're missing out on opportunities, that, and ideas that the other one have, because when we're in discussion, you know, none of us have a path to that here. We discuss things collectively, you know, something comes out that someone that none of us ever thought of. you know, something comes out that someone that none of us ever thought of, a lot of times, so, it's always best to work together, to work in harmony, Chum County lost four years of their progression, progress, you know, because of conflict, and I just, you know, I'm, I'm happy to walk out, and everybody worked together, and, you know, everything happens for a reason, new chapter, never know, you know, I start my own, uh, website. Anyway.
Wait a minute, let's do a podcast.
It won't be political, believe me, I don't, you know, I will stand, I will watch from afar. Anyway, thank everybody, thank the residents of Mahoning County, uh, you know, I live in Austin Town, I'm dying in Austin County, that's just who I am, you know, so, thank you, your kind words, all the people that called me, you know, made me feel good, it's like I, it was, it was like, it was like, uh, you know, at my funeral, you know, everybody felt so bad, and they all, but they all gave me such kind of words, and then you couldn't feel, you know, respected and, and, you know, and people calling, and, you know, I talked to a lot of people, you know, from a personal standpoint, and, so, it's all good, I can walk out.
Can I?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, Carol Audrey, and I'd like to say a few words on behalf of my election, uh, I've been doing this obviously a long time, uh, I have enjoyed doing it, uh, position does, it will hide the glow, as does any job, everybody said nothing's easy, uh, this job is not easy, uh, but to me, serving the public has been something that I have done for an awful long time, beginning back with my career with Jim Travickin, uh, who I miss dearly, greatest congressman that ever lived, and I had eleven years with Jim Travickin, and then I became a county commissioner, and at the end of this year will be twenty years for me, and people would come up to me and they'd say, Anthony, where's your committee? I don't see nobody wearing your shirts anywhere, are you running for office, what's going on, where's your campaign? And basically, I did have a lot of people this time, wearing my shirts or asking for my yard signs, or those types of things, I basically did it myself and to other people. My committee, this election and many other elections, has always been Mahoning County residents, and I want to thank those folks who voted for me, uh, not only this time, but also in the past elections, I've felt that I've tried to treat everybody fair, I've always wore my heart on my sleeve, which I do get criticized for, because I am a softie, uh, when it, when it comes to certain things, but I know of no other way to govern, just briefly wanted to say that, I want to thank everyone who supported me and who's helped me, I was on the phone all day yesterday for four and a half hours, I got over seventy-five text messages, messages on Facebook, and all kinds of things, and it is very, very gratifying, it, it really kicks you in your, to say, wow, you know what, you, you must have done something, you know what I'm saying? So I look forward to serving, again, for a new term, I look forward to working with our new county commissioner, Carol, and Dave, I've had the honor of working with you for a very long time, I just want to say you should be very proud of the service that you have had over the years, there are not many people that can sit up here and say what you said, that can stay in politics that long, keep a smile on your face, and continue to work. Dave has not only done the political side of the job, but he works in the private sector, he's one of the top salesmen, uh, for a big international company, and that's a hard act to follow, and I have to say, there's many things that I do admire, what you have brought, uh, to the county, and how you've conducted yourself in many ways, and, uh, good admission, it's been a pleasure, I know you're not going anywhere, we're still going to be here, so if we get out of line, or Tino gets out of line, you can come down and remind Jesus that it's great, or Carol, you know what, I love to, I love to pound nails and work on stuff, maybe I'll go to work for you, hey, you're more than welcome, I'd hire you in a heartbeat, but anyways, I just want to say, I wish you all the best, you have a beautiful family, and, uh, it's been a privilege to work with you. Thank you, absolutely. Okay, with that being said, when is our next meeting?
Uh, next Thursday, November fourteenth, uh, ten AM here in the hearing.
Alrighty, well, I'll ask for motion.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Jitzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remidi Oregatti?
Yes.
Commissioner Travickany?
Yes, thank you everyone.